Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. Our last meeting went a little bit long, so we're starting a couple of minutes late. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilman Steve Vincent is excused. With that, we have our opening ceremony tonight. Lars Nordfeld. Will everyone please rise with me and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We sometimes have scout troops here, and so I'm just checking to see if there are any scouts. Only one looks like he's a scout, and I assume not. You're here for the English language. Then, next, we go to the minutes of December 5th. A motion from the council on the minutes. Move to approve the minutes of December 5th. Second. Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, passes unanimously. Next, we go to our awards. And tonight, we have a presentation of English language awards to students from Granite Peaks Learning Center. And I think there are several of you here who are going to participate in that. As I... What we would like for you to do is to come up from this side and come to the microphone and introduce yourself by name. And since you're learning English as a second language, well, we hope you're not from Bangui, but that could be. They speak an unusual language there. But just tell us your country of origin, so we can welcome you here. And with that, just come on up. You can form a line here, so that you can just come up to the microphone. So those of you who are doing that, please come over here. And I believe afterwards, if you have already, your actual certificates are out here in the hall. Let's see, Kevin, do we do a picture in here?
I would like to do that.
Okay. So you'll...
Make a line here and put that in the response.
And then, if you'll wait on this side, we'll come back up and have a picture with all of you, okay? Okay. So you can go ahead and start, please.
My name is Maria Macalz Sanchez. I'm from Mexico.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ricardo Cañado. I'm from Mexico too. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Aye.
And everyone's long live. I am proud of them.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Mohamed Uki from Solay.
My name is Jorge Garcia. I'm from Guadalajara, Jalisco, Mexico. I'm happy to be here today.
Good evening. My name is Jose. I'm from Mexico City. And thank you very much.
My name is Patricia Hernandez. I'm from Isere, Salvador.
Very good. Thank you.
My name is Mauricio Rosso. I'm from Colombia.
Very good. Quite a broad... Has everyone had a chance to come up and introduce themselves that are here from Granite Peaks? Looks like so. So next, welcome to all of you. Congratulations on completing the course. And now, we'll take a picture, so if you want to come up here, Kevin, you can direct them. You guys just want to come right through here. Can I borrow your certificate for just a second? Could you come right here and be in the microphone? And I'm gonna have to hold your certificate, so they can't hurt you. I'm gonna take a couple different ones, okay? And any of the rest of you are welcome to come up and take pictures as well. They can come back there if you want, or come up here. Hang on. Get out of the way, and you can get a little closer if you want. Everyone got the pictures they want?
Good.
Okay.
Everybody good?
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Don't forget your certificates. I don't need them. Amen? Okay. Next, we have our comment period. We have several people who have signed up today. And we're ready to run with the timer and everything? Okay. We have three people who have signed up. First on our list is Aaron. Is it Hago or Hager? I'll bet that that was one of the people in there. I didn't recall that name, but... Okay. Not here. John Cross. Okay. Come up here. And you can see how much time there. Five minutes?
Okay. So let me try to take a few minutes.
Oh, okay.
Mainly regarding the... Sorry about my voice. The Boar Long Year and the Firestone Properties. Constant diesel idling. If you've ever been around the diesel idols, the constant buffering. My house is like, I don't know, maybe 50 feet from their parking lot. And then, not only with the diesel idling, Firestone across the street, the constant padding. Beep, 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 beep. And the bloody things sound exactly like my alarm. So it's constant now. You just never know when they're gonna go off. And that is basically the issues I got. To build the warehouse district just a little too tight to the housing. I guess that's about all I really got. We can do whatever we gotta do to alleviate that. I'd like it a lot.
All right.
Thank you.
So that you're aware, this is a one-way communication. There will be comments, perhaps, from us afterwards.
Okay. And that...
So hang on.
I'll take care of it.
Well, we'll see. So just have a seat. We'll go next to Kelly Bertas. She's here.
Just keep coming back, okay? Hello, City Council members. Thank you again, as usual. I just got a couple questions here that concerns Smithson Lowes Parking Lot area, where they kinda done the reconstruction on the 4100 for the Mount Corridor area. They really changed the lanes around. It used to be from the Smith parking lot by the Walgreens, you could turn to go east. And now, they put a mid-curve there and say, "No turning", which has forced all the traffic over to Lowes, which is not right. Now, you've doubled up that lane, and everybody that wants to turn east pulls in there, and it gives you nowhere to turn to go back west. Because sometimes, that line is way backed up. Maybe you can check into that. But that is not right for them to force that over into another district's parking. And they call the lanes crazy. It is horrible, especially during school hours and during going home days. It's really backed it up. Again, I've always got a concern about parking on streets. Now, we're in our winter months, and again, as I've always said, this is a safety factor for all the cars parking on both sides of the roads. Like I've said numerous times, you cannot get that big red toolbox, which is a fire truck, sometimes down my street. It is so narrow. It's crazy. Some of these houses have multiple families living in them. And I shouldn't complain about that, but when there's four or five families living in some, where you got a dozen cars parking on the street, that's when I draw the line. I don't park on the street. I never have. I got property that I can park anything I want, plus my neighbor's stuff. But it's not fair for other people to be blocked out of their homes by all these cars, especially when an emergency crisis. I know you always travel with the big trucks, with the ambulance, because sometimes, that's all you have. There's sometimes, you wouldn't get them down here. And that is a public crisis. So I hope you can look at that. And it's different times of the day that some of this parking is really bad. And I've always brought up about the weeds by the Hundred Park on the north side of the street. I don't know if DOT is responsible for that. It is a state highway. But still, again, I mean, the weeds are still pretty high, even though it's winter time. But I brought that up when the weeds were up several feet high. Speed on 6,000 West from 4100 to 35th. I wished you would put an officer in my backyard once in a while and check the speed limits. Because I can guarantee you, I got a speed gun, and I clocked over 85 miles an hour before. So, and this is quite often. Someone's gonna get hurt. I would like to know what it's gonna take from the city to assist us that lives out there to get a traffic light on 35th and 6,000. You've got one on 5200, which is only from 35th to 41. Now, 35th and 6,000 goes all the way up to 47. There's multiple schools, multiple other things there, and a lot of family dwellings. It's forcing people to go through neighborhoods, to go to 6,400, to go find a light there that they can turn with. Because during traffic hours, it's almost impossible, which causes another conflict for the school when they let out in the afternoon. It's crazy, because they back up the street forever. So I wish you could look into that. One thing that I've noticed in this last month, and I wish that you would continue to put more into it, is our fire department services. Anything to do with our safety, EMS, I'm for. I know that you bought them some other trucks and some other gear. Some of this stuff that these guys use is very old. Even though it still looks good, it's got a lot of hours on it. These guys here deserve a lot more than we give them credit for. They are the heroes that step up when everybody else is going the other way. And I wish that you would look at that and continue to grow our fire departments. I'm happy that you're making some changes on the one by Winter Dairy. But let's continue to grow it. Our city's getting big. We need more of them. And thank you very much. If I don't see you before Christmas, I wish you all happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all that were on the list. So anyone else here to speak publicly? If not, we'll close that portion. So you're aware, we're limited in being able to discuss policy issues that are not on our agenda by state law. We can maybe make reference to them. So we will add these items to our agenda next week in study meeting that meets at 4:30. It's towards the end of our meeting typically. So that you're aware, so if we don't say a whole lot, understand that we operate under very strict guidelines. We may make a couple of comments on these. Mr. Pyle, do you have any comments?
I don't tonight, certainly.
Anyone on the council? Yes.
I do, Mayor. I'd just like to make a comment regarding the recipients tonight of the English language initiative award. It's too bad they're all gone. But this is a program we've been running for a few years at virtually no cost. We do print the certificates for them. But just to see these people, we are certainly a city of immigrants. And to see people that want to learn English so that they can communicate with their neighbors and integrate into the society, that's very gratifying to me. Would note that we don't usually get a very big turnout to come and get their certificates. I understand that they have probably busy lives. We had a list of potential recipients tonight for whom we printed certificates, and it was over 30. But even of the small number that appeared, they represented, as I counted, five countries and four continents. And it's just more evidence that we are really a melting pot of the world. And it's important that we be able to speak one language and communicate with each other, that the people coming here can receive services, receive an education, receive employment. And it all boils down to being able to have a common language. And I appreciate their efforts. They say English is a difficult language to learn, although I was pretty proficient by the age of three. But we certainly congratulate them for their efforts.
Okay. Just one clarification, just by a nod of your head. Can't say anything at this point. But the Boar Long Year, the beeping, and the diesel truck idling was during the day or during the night? Was it night?
24 hours a day.
24 hours. Okay. So we'll have those discussions next week and do some follow-up on them. Okay. I'm just making some notes here for myself. So I don't... Let's see then. With that, we'll close all the comment period. We'll go next on our agenda to our public hearing. You're welcome to stay, but we'll go on to our other business now. We have, first of all, this is application S-172017 filed by Spencer Priest, final plant approval for the Frito-Lay subdivision up in the Westbridge Commerce Park. That's at approximately 6301 minus 4700 south. In this, we will also consider, when we actually make the motion, ordinance 17-37. This is pretty straightforward item. Frito-Lay has their plant there. At one point, it was broken into different pieces. And this is combining those into a single parcel, which, for purposes, there's some abandonment of some utility easements, as I recall, some things. But fairly routine. Doesn't change anything. Building stays there, just the way it is. They may expand later on. With that then, is the introduction to the issue. Let me just see if there was... Close that. Get the right stuff up. Yes. Let's see. My fingers don't work real well. Gotta get it in the right spot. All the property in the one lot. And if there are... So that's really all we need to present on that, lest someone wants to add something. With that introduction then, we will now open a public comment period and invite anyone here who is here to speak to this issue to come forward at this time. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Thank you. Please come forward.
Again, City Council members. Kelly Bertas. Yeah, this here kind of goes with just exactly what I was talking about. Traffic will be right there on 6,400, going more to Frito-Lay. So again, 35th is a... And 6,000 is a main thorough road for both these. This will go right back to eat this. It's gonna put more traffic if we're putting more subdivision in that area. So hopefully, I can get you guys in the city to help put more pressure on DOT to get a light there. Because this is just straight above me. I know exactly where Frito-Lay is. I know exactly where this is gonna be put. And that's gonna put more pressure on two main roads there. It'll be on 6,000, going all the way up to 4,700, which goes to Frito-Lay, and also 6,400, that goes to same place. Again, 6,400 is a single turning lane, and it is miserable with off... Off work hours. It's kind of an off-side turning lane, and it's really hard. It backs up pretty bad during rush hours. That's good way of putting it. Everybody coming from the north, coming south. It makes it maybe one car, if that, sometimes two cars, can make it through that light during the heavy traffic. It's gonna put more pressure on both these streets. So I hope that we can look at that when this is approved. And again, it's just gonna be putting more pressure and more of an unsafe area on both these areas. I hope you consider that while looking at these plans.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak to that? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council.
May I move for approval of ordinance 17-37?
Second. Properly before us. Any further discussion? Yes.
I'd like to know, Mr. Pyle, if we had any traffic studies out there recently, 6,000 and 6,400, and possibility of a light at 6,000?
I don't know. We'll answer that personally. Turn and ask if we do. Steve, do you know?
Russ Wallertson, Public Works Director. So we have asked you to take a look at that, but have not received any response back.
We haven't yet.
Yeah, so we'll follow up on that.
Okay. So we'll follow up on the request.
And I know that not only is Frito-Lay putting another plan, but we also have subdivisions and more traffic going out there. And somewhat limited ability to do whatever we want to with the roads that are already there, but we probably ought to be looking ahead and planning ahead on that. So I'm glad to hear that we are... That is in the works too. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilwoman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Let's go to application S-192017 filed by Cam Preston. Again, final plant approval. The Chevron 5,600 West subdivision at 2455 South 5,600 West. This is another case where they're taking a single... Or excuse me, three different parcels of ground, all owned by the same entity, that was at one point split into three. They thought they could sell them easier in that case, but apparently, they have an interested buyer, but it has to be all three. This will pull them back into a single plot. And that is the issue before us. With that then, introduction, I will open the public comment period on this issue. Is there anyone here to speak to this? No one here to speak to it. With that then, we'll close the public comment portion. We'll come back to the council for any comments or motions.
May I move for approval of ordinance 17-38?
Second.
Properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have application... This is under our new business. Application S-132017 filed by David Waldron, final plant approval for the Brundle Estates subdivision at 3264 West, 3,100 South. Okay. This particular parcel of ground, let's see. 3.25 acres. They propose six new lots. Approximately, the lot sizes range from just under 13,000 square feet to just a little over 19,000 square feet, averaging about 1.8 units per acre. And the access to this will be gained from a current street, the subdivision to the north. And it will have a single cul-de-sac, no other outlet. And so, everything else seems to be in order with it. With that introduction then, to the council.
I move for approval of application S-132017?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilwoman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to application S-162017 filed by Ben Norman. Final plant approval again, but this is on the Northridge Estates subdivision at 2235 West, 3,800 South. This particular property will take a single lot and divide it into two. With the first lot being about 8,000 square feet, lot two will be approximately 14,400 square feet. And this is a flag lot. There's a stem portion that runs down there, but all frontage and area requirements, both lots are satisfied. Access will be gained from 3,800 South. An existing built home will remain on lot one. The other lot will have some... There'll be a single car garage that's there to stay, but a freestanding carport removed, and then they'll build a home there. So that is the information on the property. That is the issue before us. To the council. Move for approval of application S-16-2017. Properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Buehler?
May.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
That's the one that I raised such a discussion on in council in our study meeting last week. Okay. Passes. Then we go to our consent agenda, resolution 17-187. This is to ratify city manager's appointment of Jake Fitzimano to the West Valley City Housing Authority Commission for a term commencing January 2nd, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2021. This is required. This is the only one that has to be officially ratified, even though council members serve as members of this particular housing authority. But state statute requires that we take official action on the other two committees, the economic... The redevelopment and the building authority. Those are just appointed and done. But this one has to be official action. And Mr. Fitzimano has been elected to the council and will begin his service on, interestingly enough, the same day as his appointment to this, January 2nd. And of course, since that's mentioned, we of course invite all of you to come that day for the... Swearing in. I don't like to use that term. Swearing is kind of... Sorry, but the...
You're sworn in one day and then sworn out for the next 40 minutes.
See, I'm a straight man. You give the punchlines. Okay. With that then, to our city recorder for the vote. Move for approval of the consent agenda. Second. Okay. When people tell jokes, then I get all clustered, because I'm an accountant. Nothing... No, it's just that nothing's funny to me. I'm always the straight man. So now that we have the motion properly before us, and thank you, council, for keeping us on track. And I'm not in a hurry to get out of here. I just want to leave. So with that, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northville?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have no need for an executive session, so our business is concluded. Any final comments from the council or city manager? We will hold our meeting next week, and then the following week, no council meeting will be held because of Christmas week, so we'll traditionally take one off at that time of the year. So there will be a break there. With that then, our last motion. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. We're adjourned.